Okay, I'll call to order the joint meeting of mayor and council along with our planning and zoning group. We appreciate you guys being here along with Debbie File, who's going to update us on our 2020 comprehensive plan, goals, and strategies. I will say we do have a couple council people that are coming from work and they'll be coming in as we begin. So Debbie, if you'll lead us off.
All right. Thank you. It's great to see the Planning Commission and the council again under these unique terms with our face mask and everything. So I appreciate you having us and especially with the live stream and the accommodations you have to keep the project rolling under the mandates that we have with the state. So with me today is Madeline Pushkar. She's an engineer, rotational engineer in training. She's never done a comprehensive plan before. She's been researching Seaford. So we drove through today. So she's a contributor to your project. Unfortunately, I lose her in October for her next rotation. So we showed her how great it is to work for our local municipalities. So welcome, Madeline, and thanks for your help on the project. So today, the next slide, please. What we're going to do is provide goals and strategies and just an update of where we are in the project. COVID has impacted several projects with outreach, several projects with meetings, our approach. So we've had to change the way we do normal business. Normally, I could put some dry erase boards, some sticky notes up. We can do some charrette workshops. That's changed a little bit with the format and the guidance that we have now with COVID from the governor. So you have a project update. We're going to talk about your chapter layouts, the goals, the strategies, your schedule, and then our next step. So you exactly know where we're at today and where we're going. Next slide. Oh, I can do it. Okay. Great. I've got the power. See if I mess it up. Just like that.
Just that quick?
Yep. There we go. All right. So you've seen this slide, not necessarily in this format. Must be a PDF. So you've seen this slide before with the circles. We're actually into the plan input and draft documents. We're on our Phase 3. We collected all of our data, as you're aware, and you were involved. We did all of our community outreach in our surveys, and we released that data as well. So we've had several meetings just to keep everybody involved. We kicked that off in October with our kickoff meetings, our public outreach events. You added multiple outreach events, which was great. And our goals presentation, I apologize, the last meeting I could not come to. We actually were exposed to somebody with COVID at a town meeting. So today's our first day back to work publicly. So you'll see us en masse all the time. So tonight's the goals presentation meeting as we move forward. So the project really hasn't had a breach in our contract or a breach with your scope. We've had a delay with things because of the new way of doing business. So we talked to your staff briefly in mid-August, and we talked about how your current plan is laid out. It's a good plan. It's a solid plan. It gives you direction to move forward. But the user-friendly side is where we want to kind of increase and make things a little bit better. So these are the sections that the state's going to require in your comprehensive plan that we already know about. But when you break the document down, what we've learned in, this is my eighth plan in my career. It only happens every 10 years. I'm not that old. We're just doing a lot of them. When you look at the housing chapter, I don't want you to have to look in transportation, infrastructure, and all the other ones. I want you to pull the housing section. So if you're doing some kind of work with a community organization, a nonprofit, a business, we want them to use this document just as much as the city has, as we've talked about in the past. So you'll see our first introduction is going to lay up all of your outreach, everything you've done, our surveys. The second one talks about the community profile, where you're at, demographics, a little bit of information on climate. The third chapter is a big new one for you. We're going to go into the city departments, what they do, what your boards and commissions do in the council, what they're charged with. And then we also talk about all the community services. All the community organizations are actually in there with perks and kudos and their mission statement and website links. So this is a great document to say you want to be a part of the community. There's a way to be involved. This helps those organizations lay up for funding as well. Then we go into housing, economic development, historic cultural resources, open space and recreation. We talk about transportation, which is not just vehicle. It's pedestrian, bikes, et cetera. Environmental protection covers quite a bit. And then infrastructure. Infrastructure's broadband, sewer, water, stormwater, anything that has to do with infrastructure, streets. Then we get into land use and annexation. Those are all the components required. What matters to your staff probably the most and to you is Chapter 13. Unfortunately, it's that number, but Chapter 13 implementation. In our document, you're going to see us recommend that the Planning Commission meet with the commission, with the council, once a year before the budget, to talk about what you're going to do in the comp plan for next year. One, two, or three projects. What are you going to pull out of this to make it a living document that you want considered in your budget for next year? As you know, most implementation task takes money, but if they select an item, you might be able to get grant money for it, too. So get your game plan, meet monthly, talk about what the council wants to do, talk about the commission, and how the staff can support it. As you're very familiar in government, if you do too many projects, half of them won't turn out successful if you do too many at a time. So to have this focused and to lay this up into your capital improvement plan and your annual budget process will be very beneficial. That's our recommendation you'll see in that. There will be a matrix in there that each year, the Planning Commission Chair, the council, and the town manager, city manager can take the matrix and submit it to the state to say, we've completed this, it's ongoing, we're waiting for you to give us money, et cetera. So you'll see that chart will be your report directly to the state. And that's the way they prefer it to be actually provided, it is a matrix. So that'll be very helpful for you. So the bookends, I think, are important. And the appendix are going to show several things. They're going to show all of your mapping. Depending on how long it is, we know the survey was very lengthy. We know the outreach was really good at the events. So they may be attachments on the website and noted. If we get up to 200 and some pages, you just don't want all of that at the end. So we'll look at that as we grow your chapters. Any questions on your general layout? So if you're interested in housing, and that's your deal, and that's what you really want to go for, and you're working hard on statistics, you can just pull that out and be able to use it. Okay. So the goals that we have, the goals that are going to be in black ink are going to be goals that are existing in your plan. The goals that are in blue or green, sorry, are goals that I'm recommending that I think will be able to help you. Since you have a new chapter of city and community, we didn't have any goals there, but you have evaluate the methods to increase city revenues to enhance services in the community. Believe it or not, that's probably being done each year in your budget. That's part of the budget process. But we want to enhance it because the town should always, the city should always look at ways to increase revenues and also ways to curb expenses. That is part of your normal budget process. I think it's good to leave in there. But what I'd like to see is a lot of community organizations and people in the public don't understand how much the city contributes to community organizations and community events. So not everything's done monetarily. So if you have an event and you have public works and you do the trash, you provide a dumpster, you do streets, you do the policing, all of that is encumbered. Somebody's paying for that service. Somebody's paying it out of that budget. And usually, you do not see it monetary in a budget. It's just hours and in-kind. Maybe you see a tipping fee for the dumpster, but you don't really know how much the police costs sometimes. So what we recommend here is to continue to support all community services. This may be monetary donations, personnel involvement, event support, membership, and the city does a great job advertising everything on the website. That's right there. Worth something, worth a value. So as your budgets get more increased and as we go through things like COVID and crunching budgets and we're watching them a little bit more on conditions, not everything's going to be about money. So it's going to be about services, support, and advertisement. So we thought that was a good goal to insert in this chapter. And you do this already, by the way. This isn't anything new. We just want you to continue to do it. So you'll see not every chapter has several of them. These two that are in red were brand-new goals that you came up with and fed to us. And what we did was we wordsmithed a little bit here. So I get the point. Simplify as much as feasible the steps to development. Every town here, you're not business-friendly. Every single town here is, I mean, every town I serve is not business-friendly. Everybody says it. That's not necessarily true. It's usually education. There's areas for improvement, but it's usually education. And to provide opportunities to do businesses with the city during and after business hours for the website interface. The city's done quite a bit and quite a bit more than a lot of other places far as services, portals, advertisement, live streaming, all the improvements that have been made with your communications and services. Probably still areas to improve. There always is. We're trending with times. Who would have thought we would be live streaming meetings and sitting six people in a room? So what we'd like to do is roll this together to say, continue to research and provide available online services outside of normal business hours. I'm still playing with this a little bit more because we get the intent, but the feasible steps for development, you're going to see me cover further down. So when somebody gave me this sentence, which one of you or two of you or whatever gave us these sentences, we're making sure the intent is there, but we're not able to identify steps to delete yet. That's part of the implementation. We're just available to do the goal. So business-friendly is the goal, and you'll see that a little further. So these were also two comments, and you'll see I streamlined those. To improve the quality of life by addressing the incidents and the root causes of crime. Depends on who you talk to, what the root cause of a crime is. It really is in the eye of the beholder. That's very hard to take statistics and make them go in one direction. To continue developing ways to decrease and prevent drug overdoses and crimes. So we were saying, improve proactive approaches to reduce the amount of crime and drug-related activity in the city. So proactive approaches could be the police department. It could be nonprofit organizations. It could be service-driven. It could be state-driven, county-driven. So what we're trying to do is say, what is the goal, and how do we get there is the next step in your strategy. So what we did was we took these two and combined them that I think still meets the intent of what you wanted. We just took two and kind of lumped them together with the same type of intent. So housing goals, these two in the black ink, once again, we're already in there. Increase the percentage of single-family dwelling units, and the council as a whole felt that these two should stay. The state's going to require you to promote housing opportunities for all income ranges. That's just going to be a requirement. And the city already had it in their comp plan. We'll carry that through. We'd like to add, too, support all housing rehabilitation programs to improve the integrity of the existing housing stock. So when you see property maintenance and housing stock, lack of maintenance, it's not necessarily code enforcement for not doing the job. It's not necessarily the code with the appeals, the fines, penalties. That's a whole nother deal. This is actually going out and supporting some of the services that we have to help some rehab and to be able to get them to do it rather than come in the code enforcement manner with, you know, written warnings. We also think ensuring existing housing units are code compliant for safe occupancy, whether they're rented or owned. So everything is here is whether it's rented or owned, but safe occupancy is important. This will allow a little bit of teeth for your code enforcement as well to say, it's in the comprehensive plan. You want safe housing, no matter what the income is, demographics, socioeconomic, or cost is for everybody. So we thought these two were great to add to your housing. That wouldn't put you on the hook for too much, but would also say, listen, we think we could do maybe a better job in these and help support a little bit more in housing. So here was a new one. Leverage Seaford's designation as an opportunity zone for economic development opportunities. I think it's great. The three in the black ink were promote successful business environment in order to grow economic development. Continue to support your DDD. That was new. It's of the downtown district. We just changed it to the proper wording. Continue to expand Seaford's role as the primary employment center for Western Sussex. And then we put provide support for commercial redevelopment with an emphasis on existing vacant buildings. So this, to me, is important. Redevelopment is what's going to happen quite a bit, whether it's a vacant lot where something was tore down or a vacant structure. So really provide some kind of support. I'm not talking about money all the time. By support, I'm going to show you a little bit further down, how you can promote those projects. But it's not giving away impact fees, building permits, everything else that somebody else had to pay for. There's ways to help people redevelop. There's ways to use state funding to be able to redevelop. So we're going to show you some mechanisms there. Your historical and cultural resource goals. In the comp plan, it currently says preserve and enhance Seaford's heritage, historic heritage. We would like to encourage the use of federal and state tax credit programs for restoring historic buildings. There's a flip of a coin on historic buildings. They're great. You want them preserved, but the other side of it is the property owner has to want to be able to do it. And there is quite a bit of government regulations and guidelines, not local, federal, to be able to do things to get this. So we want it to be up to the people to be able to do it. If they want to do it, the city can support it, but there's programs out there for people to do it. So let's educate them and bring some people in to support their projects. And on historic and cultural resources, Seaford has a great mix of cultural resources. You know, I've attended a variety of them. So continue to promote and support all community events, especially with where we're at with social justice today. So continue to promote and support all community events. So you do that already, but I think that should be known in the plan, especially under this chapter. Two of the ones that we got on open space and recreation chapter were enhance recreation opportunities along the Seaford Riverfront and Nanacoque River. And you have some plans there that are great to showcase. So great job, the city for your forward thinking on that and funding. And to provide more public entertainment for all income levels. I think this will be forever on every plan, forever and ever and ever is how you can support things like that. But what we'd like to do is further determine if the needs are being met based on increased growth within the community. One thing that pandemic has kind of taught us is for people to do more outside activities, more things outside, classrooms outside, learning outside, outdoor dining, which is outdoor liquor licenses. So there's several things that have made us feel that we need to get outside a little bit more. So are we meeting the needs of the environment? Have we done a survey for parks and recreation? The state just did one through their SCORE project, but have we determined what the people of Seaford want, what you want to get involved with liability, what structures you want? Some people want swimming pools, splash parks, dog parks, I go on and on. But are they affordable? Can you maintain them? Do you have to charge them? Do you have to raise taxes? So let's find out what the needs are. Pickleball, hottest, latest thing. So let's find out what the needs are again. So we think this would be good for you to be able to assess how you're moving forward with the master plan and parks. Transportation to improve the safety and mobility of the transportation network. That's in there now. We had a little bit of work that we got to do with the Salisbury-Comico MPO, and I know Charles sits on that board. So I think that it would be great to say, continue to work with and partner with them on transportation improvement projects in and around the city. If the Salisbury MPO goes for money for a project that's in the city and you have it in your comprehensive plan, you are to get extra points just for that application. So you want to support anything that's happening on your corridor at all, and you can be able to partner with it. This is the first time I've ever seen this at all in your comprehensive plan. And you guys have been at every meeting, been actively involved. Recently, for the first time ever, they brought funding to Delaware in the past couple of years. So this is a big tickler to put in here, and this will help with funding of infrastructure on the highway, ADA compliance, et cetera sidewalks. Environmental protection in the current plan is protect sensitive areas around the water quality of the Nanacoque River. We understand that. So now let's talk about what Denrick's going to want you to put in their plan a little bit, and I think it's low-hanging for you. Support energy efficiency and renewable energy upgrades with new and existing developments. There are several mechanisms for, you know, how you can actually do renewable energy and energy efficiency. We will refer the information to Denrick. They're the portal. They're the website. They give the credits for it. They give the information. They give grants. So we're not saying everybody can have solar panels. Everybody can have wind turbines. We're going to put one in the middle of the river. We're not saying any of that. We're saying, we're supporting it. Let's get more education on it, have the state come in and talk to us about their programs. So you're the portal to better help your community through state funding programs or federal. Continue to work and coordinate with Sussex Conservation District, and I think they're on tonight, to ensure new developments and redevelopment projects adequately address stormwater quality and quantity. What we're finding here is Conservation District gets involved in lots that have 5,000 or more impervious surface coverage. It's the smaller lots that sometimes do the most damage for infill. So some of the municipalities are actually looking at teaming with the Conservation District or talking about a potential partnership, or doing it on their own, where they're going to start doing stormwater reviews on smaller. So this is something you might see yourself going to. It's infill lots. So you have three houses in a row. The middle one tears it down, raises their lot. They're the moat. The next two properties have water on them because there's nobody truly reviewing that under that amount, not at a staff level that probably needs to be. I wouldn't be able to review on that. I'd have to get an engineer to do it. So I think that's something you're going to look towards going towards. So I didn't put that as, I just put that as, continue to coordinate and partner. They're a great partner. They've got some great programs. And then continue to, I always have to put this one in, my little dig. Continue to communicate with federal and state agencies as well as local state representatives regarding potential unfunded mandates for the town to monitor and/or enforce. This is something I'm putting in every one of the comprehensive plans because as you get into MS4, as you get into stormwater, as you get into anything that you're asked to enforce source water protection, that needs to be at a level that your staff isn't able to have certification or liability on, it's just being piled on the local organization that's not able to enforce it. So getting ahead of this and putting this in here will help you when you go forward to say, these are unfunded mandates. I think that's good terminology to be able to help when you're kind of playing the middle. In the red, once again, is proposal, ones that we have create shovel-ready sites with water and sewer service along Sussex Highway, Ross Business Park, and Seaford Industrial Park for job creation. I think it's great whoever wrote this that pulled them out. I'm probably going to streamline this one a little bit more to say, further identified an infrastructure program. And you're going to see when I get to further down the slide what I mean. To have infrastructure in place to grow, it's almost the same as the top one, but it's targeted area. And to enter the power generation market via combined fossil fuel and renewable fuel generation. So great one as well, but your general public does not understand what that is. They'll be more concerned about, am I going to get cancer from, you know, 5G? What's going to happen? There's smoke, noise, odor. You went through that a long time ago with DuPont. So things like this scare people. It's the education. So to here, we would say, to educate and further promote, obtain information and marketing materials so people understand it. So this is very specific. I think it's a great one. I think we can lump it with renewable energy, talk about educating and bringing in the resources to be able to help you out. Provide safe and adequate public utility service was in your former plan. We added, too, that we thought you might want to consider. Continue to encourage and support the expansion of broadband services to residents and businesses. So you've done a great job. You've got a lot going on there. There's still several areas. Maybe you can have free Wi-Fi areas, and there's a lot still to grow into. We want to put this in here for the funding that's out there right now with the state and DTI. So once again, you're talking about, you need the broadband. COVID has proven people are working from home. Children are learning from home. If they're not learning from home, they're going home to do homework. So things have changed. It's a necessity now. It's a need versus a want. So we want to be able to lay you up and put that in your comprehensive plan. We'll talk about some of the initiatives in the plan that you've already done, but I think it's very important that you play, you get in that game to get additional funding. And then once, promote the installation upgrade of overhead utilities to be completed underground when applicable. This is always a big thing. Thank goodness you provide your own electric. So you're your own bad guy, but it is very costly to put underground. It's very unrealistic in a lot of areas. Is there funding that can be done? If you're doing a sewer project or water, is there additional, it's still a lot of money, no matter how you do it. But we still want to put that in there. So if funding comes available, you can be able to do it. But that's very, very costly. It can sometimes take a project from a standard sewer project to three times the amount just to put overhead underground. There's so many benefits to that. On the land use side, we're still dipping into this one a little bit because you didn't have any land use goals specifically in the chapter before, but we'd encourage strong community design standards that help to guide development in a way that's consistent with the city character and promote walk-in building connectivity. So it's very broad. How do we get there? We have to work out several strategies, but it's very broad in your land use. So we really don't come in here and say, some of the plans you'll see say, we want McDonald's. We want something very specific. We want a Wawa. Very, very specific in nature. This is land use. So we're talking just commercial, residential, multifamily, those categories, open space, preservation. So we're still going to work in this as we go through your chapters a little more. I think that's a good start. And now when we go into strategies, just to let you know, our goal, here's an example of what we're doing now. The goal is to promote a successful business environment in order to grow economic development. How do we, how do we get there? We don't want to be as specific in this section. We don't want to say, reduce plan of use to 30 days. That's the answer. Because then you have to bring it back to your staff and say, how do you do this in 30 days? You physically can't with your meeting schedule. You physically can't with your staff, or you have to hire more people for what we just sold. So we're trying to be general enough to take some one-off products. Review your current land development procedures for areas of improvement, to reduce the time and/or potential redundancies. Well, who's going to know that best? Your staff. And then who's going to know it second best is the person that's crying how they don't want to go through the process all the time. Sit them down together, and how can they come up with it? Why do we have to ask for that? Why do we have to have 15 plans? Why can't we just get one electronically now? So there's ways where everybody can kind of work together on this, and the people that do it every day are the people that need to be at the table and bring suggestions to you. So I think this is a good one where you just look at all your procedures in place and say, what do you trust the staff to do without your involvement for the Planning Commission? What does the Planning Commission really want to see? Do they want to see everything? Are there certain things that they just can't say no to because it's allowed? So why review it? So those procedures are important, especially now, especially with economic development and smaller businesses and what's happening with, you know, businesses not having as much revenue. The other one, this is the one I think would be really good for Seaford is research and create marketing materials. And I wasn't as specific here, but as easy as a map, to promote areas of opportunity with existing infrastructure. So if you have vacant properties and vacant structures that already have water and sewer in front of them, storm drain, why aren't we promoting those first? Instead of outbuilding on the highway, building on the outskirts, or building on all on the outskirts of town, you're going to have vacant buildings eventually closer to where you have the majority of density, and people are going to have to drive to those locations to do the service. So why can't we market by creating marketing materials, say, we're open, we have this vacant piece of property, it's a very easy mapping exercise to do. And it's something very easy. You could put on the website. You can ask the property owners if they want to link to them for information. Ask the realtors if they want to link. So now you're in the real estate business of just helping connect people to get what you really want, which is infill and potentially job creation. So in doing that, we would work continually with Sussex Economic Development. That department has grown so much from Sussex County in years. So stay with that group, feed as much as you can possible. You're already in the top tier of working with them. Continue that. The Delaware Prosperity Partnership, build a relationship with them. They are bringing it, and they're bringing in large employers, but that's been a feeder for Middletown. We know that's been very successful for Mayor Ken. So get with Delaware Prosperity Partnership. Sell your town to say, guess what? We need your help. Here's our map. Give this to everybody you know looking in Delaware. So you're competing with other municipalities, but you always have been. And the Greater Seaford Chamber of Commerce. So take the same document in step two and try to use it in step three. That's not a lot of time. That's not a lot of money. That's a map for probably under $2,000. It can change quarterly maybe instead of monthly. So that's a way where we can help promote by not giving away impact fees, not giving away building permits, not reducing some kind of revenues, but providing a service at a minimal cost. So this is how you're seeing we will be going through each one of your goals. And we're going to go ahead and take that exercise on and give it to the staff to review because we probably have the most experience in how to obtain larger projects and smaller projects under each one of these goals. And then you'll be able to see it with the Planning Commission and the council collectively in the draft document to be able to review. And this will tell you how you can get there. It doesn't limit you. So the goals that you have in front of you tonight were the goals that we got several months ago from you. When you review the document with the data and all the information we're going to have in it, it will trigger something to say, oh, this is a new goal, or, oh, I want Or, oh, I want to be able to do this. So remember, goals give us a high level where we want, where we would like to be, where we think the vision is. Strategies are what we're going to do to get there. And even though you don't have them identified, does not mean I'm not going to be a part of it. But it's a starting point because what you're doing now should last the five to 10 years, so it's going to be changing. So I think the way we're laying up your document is going to be able to help you very well to be able to say, what do we have to do? What department? What group? What board should take on some of these tasks? And the other thing I want to be very honest and let you know, you will never get it all done. So that's the thing. Every planning commissioner council member that I meet that's new always says, why aren't we doing everything that says in the comprehensive plan? You don't have enough money in the world. You don't have enough time, you don't have enough expertise. Every one of those steps takes money or time. And predominantly it takes money. So if you can prioritize them and come through and say, this year we'd like to look at this. And the planning commission says, this year we'd like to take this on for you and give a recommendation and bring it back to you. That's the game plan of how you're going to keep this document fluid. I guarantee that even you'll talk to Selbyville, Millville, Newcastle's almost wrapped up now, that they have not put their document on the shelf. All their organizations and other groups and entities are using it. So that's really what we want from yours as well. So we're going through the goals right now. So now I want to talk about schedule. COVID's been very interesting. The way we present things, the way we do things get a little different. And I know this is a hard screen to read. Our schedule A was a schedule that would take us through the end of February or March. And that means that there's going to be two meetings. We'd have our draft meeting that we would present it to the joint, once we get to the city staff, we send the planning commission, the council and say, here's our presentation, here's what's changed last time. Here's the things that the public should worry about, you should be aware about. Here's what we've done to improve things. Here's where we're going. We would release that document. And the things that changed in COVID is normally I can stand up here for two hours and take pop shots of what people don't like about it. We're going to have to require all comments be put in writing. So we'll have a format and a form, we're using that right now in Newcastle, we're going to ramp it up in Rehoboth as well. So the people that want to read it and take their time to do written comments, they can bring them in town hall or city hall or they can, but the emails come directly to us and CC the staff. We put them all in a spreadsheet so you'll see all of the comments. The good news is you won't see anybody's name. Because there is no politics or names in planning. We'll see the comment, a recommendation from us on what we think you should do and then what your answer is if you like it or not. So that, we're talking about kicking that off originally in October. We're now going to look, we're gearing towards schedule B, which means the beginning of November, the staff will have the draft document. We have a couple new items to put in it. State strategies just got adopted in July. In your comprehensive plan, we have the old ones, so we're pulling that data over. The county has done several code changes that we're kind of pulling some of their information in. And they've had a lot of development around the municipality. Blades has not had theirs adopted yet, but we do have their draft information around there because we're doing their plan. So you touch Blades, you need to know what they're doing. So we're looking at around, right around Thanksgiving week, before, after, depending on how your schedules work. We'd be having that meeting, we'd release it to, the state's requiring us to send it to the county. We'll send it to Blades, Bridgeville, and then we'll also send it to the MPO, to Keith Hall to be able to review as well. He'll be very happy we have his new information in there. And then we have to submit it to the state, so they'll do a review on it as well. So your public timeframe for the public comments, we were very considerable to the timeframe of giving people more time. Especially with COVID, you're going to read the document, you have to do written comments. It should never be 20 days, two weeks. So our tentative time is November 24th, depending on our meeting, till January 5th. So there's plenty of time in there with the holiday breaks and everybody for everybody to be able to do comments. And that's about a timeframe with the holidays and everything that you would want. There's a lot of social events that are being canceled, there's less Christmas parties, we used to go to 20 probably. I don't know how many you'll get this year. No return date and nothing else, so we'll see. So then we have our Office of State Planning Commission meeting in December. Those comments come back, all the written comments come back to us in advance. We'll catalog all of them and we'll be presenting those at the middle to the end of January, which is the next meeting that says, that's the city council's public hearing. We're going to ask for everybody to provide advanced comments. But every person has the right to come to your public meeting and talk that night. We want to just be able to prepare a response. So it's been working pretty good, we're about 98% people comply. Because then we can consider it and put it in the plan and give a recommendation. If people want to come up and talk in the mic and not do written comments, that's fine. There might just be a slight delay in our information, but I bet we already have it covered, to be honest with you. So then we update the plan based on your recommendations from our chart. And we send it off to the state, they have 20 working days to say, you're good to go, you met all the requirements. And then after that, we do a second read and adoption. The state recommends you do an adoption contingent upon the governor's certification. So we'll have a letter from the state saying you have no certification issues. We just don't know when the, you know, when the governor's availability. But it becomes law when you enact it. And then we'll give you everything electronically. You will own this document too. The other thing our company is really big, when I came here was saying, we're not going to use a software program you can't use to write this. You get the actual, it's a word document. You get the actual document, you get all of the maps, you get your engineer will get all the maps. So if you have a change or modification, you don't have to hire a consultant. You can come in and change part of it, you can own it, you can modify it, you can update it. So it's a great stand for you to be able to be a little bit more independent in the process and to be able to do some amendments. So you'll own that document. It'll also be in the format where if you want to use it for future presentations for organizations or other places, you can cut and paste the information out of it. You own it. So of course, we're going to want our logo on it, but you own it. Shameless plug. So our task to still do is the strategies. I told you, we're going through your goals, we're pulling the strategies in. The other thing that we have created this brand new, we just released it to Rehoboth was after you get done with the chapter, we have an icon in there that says public input. We pull the public input for that topic. Instead of take all your surveys and just put them in the back for somebody to read someday, did somebody read them and did they pull them into the plan? We're actually taking the recommendations and pulling them in that section. So there'll be an icon and you'll have bullets of what the public talked about. It'll be the same thing for any kind of outreach events that we have. So that, the end of the section will be public outreach and then your goals right after that. So the bookends part of that will work out good. We need to update the map sets, as you know, state strategies change. We have some other updated map sets from First Map. We'll finish creating the draft plan and then prepare for our next meeting, which would be in that timeframe of November. And work with the city staff in between. So the city, we still have the same stuff, they're basically waiting on us being very good. We're trying to get city photos, old and new to compare. I think that works really good when we get, Historic Culture Affairs has some really good old Seaford pictures. We had some of our rotational engineers come out and stand in the same spot. So you'll see some downtown of where they are today. Some were hard to match up, we had to go by roof lines and old chimneys and street poles. So I think some of those old and new really depict where you were, where you are, where you're going. City data coordination, we're still continuing that with any kind of updates. You already gave us a lot of city data, but now it's been a year, so we're going to probably get that last year. And then we want them to review the internal draft. Since your staff's going to be the ones that are going to be enforcing it, you know, using it every day, using it more and more, especially with new development, redevelopment, we want them to be able to look at it and them to be able to feed us teeth on how to administer it, you know, on a useful basis. And how to use it as a tool versus something that can be used against you or you can use against something else. It should be a tool. And we're still, we're still proud to serve you guys. So we're still really proud to serve City of Seaford. It's a great municipality, you've got great staff. You have so much available on your website that we don't have to bother your staff as much, which makes amazing transparent government. So we really appreciate it because we're not bothering your staff, you've done a great job loading things up there. Everybody knows what's going on, there's no surprises, and we can pull all of that data for you to make educated decisions on how to move forward with the city. So I said I'd be 6:30, I'm four minutes late, but questions are coming.
So Debbie, thank you so much. We do have a city council meeting at seven, so we have about 10 minutes for questions. If we could start with our honored guest here from Planning and Zoning, that would be great. If any of you have any questions, we'll bring you a mic so it can. Somebody on Planning and Zoning has to have a question.
They're probably waiting patiently for the document because redlining is easier than unknown probably. Once you get it and read it, we'll probably really look for comments, but right now it's the unknown.
So no questions from the Planning and Zoning Committee? How about from City Council? Any, any questions for Deputy Councilman Henderson?
Thank you for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. One of the slides you presented, our designation as an opportunity zone. Could I encourage you to consider that maybe revising that language? Because we don't know how much of a shelf life the opportunity zone has. We're two months away from possibly going to a new administration and that might, that might dry up or they might go in a different direction. So, you know, wordsmithing a little different to say, because that, that could have a very limited, it's a 10 year document and it might be gone in just a few months. So I would encourage that we try and do something to describe that a little differently without saying opportunity zone.
I can tell you that if you allow me to sponsor that, the opportunity zone is a terminology used in Maryland. And it's actually a layer where there is funding by the state and it's known and it's in their comprehensive plan. So the word, that was a comment that we got from the council. So the word opportunity zone really has a lot of meaning and valid, is valid in the state of Maryland. And you get extra perks and it's an overlay district. It is not that case in Delaware at all. So when I talked about having that map and the marketing opportunities for looking for proper placement with existing infrastructure, you can call that priority areas. And by priority, I don't mean politics and I don't mean type of use. I mean, because the infrastructure's in place. So it's actually almost turnkey ready. We talk about shovel ready, it's almost turnkey. So we can wordsmith that a little different, but I agree, an opportunity zones is very, it's a choice word and it's a buzzword that economic development uses. But now the word's prosperity and then it's used, so we'll definitely take a look at that.
Yeah, but to, I mean, it is, it is a term being used by the current state administration. And we are designated an opportunity zone, but that may get changed.
And everything will, so whatever words you use now under current administration, the Delaware prosperity used to be Delaware Dito.
Right, yes.
So that's also political. So, so we, we can make it where it's a neutral topic, a neutral word to use. But we still want to revert to whoever's in administration that will give you funding. So yep, that's great, no problem, we changed it.
I think the key part to that is, is that if the name changes, we'll be have the ability to go into the plan and change that name.
Absolutely.
What's the mechanism to do that?
So the comprehensive plan is a living document, okay? A couple of things happen. One, the city council accepts it once KCI does all their work and it's in a fashion. And then additionally, it gets submitted to the Office of State Planning and the governor actually has to certify our plan. So we can make changes to it and we've done it several times. This body has done it recently with our land use maps when we've done some annexations. So it's a process, I'm going to say, start to finish, it traditionally takes 60 to 90 days at the outside. Depending upon the map change that occurs, is there text that needs to, to change? But we can, I will say this related to this. In the last comprehensive plan, the existing one, the Sussex County Council as well as our comprehensive plan reference Seaford as an employment center. And that's in there and that's a terminology that was used. And maybe to your point, it never really materialized into anything per se. You know, that terminology never got adopted really by the county per se to say what it means. We could have taken it a long way. We could have said, and we, and we did with the Economic Development Director. We, we gave through the Economic Development Committee some dollars for jobs creation under certain circumstances. We have an economic development rate for electric usage. So you're right, we need to wordsmith it and then put in what does that mean? And give the council the framework with planning and zoning to say, what do we want to focus on? How do we want to focus on it? And present that to developers for development opportunities.
And you'll see buzzwords, for example, livable Delaware was Governor Minner's words. That was her, her to our cabinet, that's still being used today and still should. Walkability, bikeability. I mean, who was the last governor that biked, did bicycle? So every, you play on each one of them in a neutral fashion. And then you, we're not as specific in the plan on certain things because you don't know which way it'll go. But you'll always be forgetting more money. Literally, I mean, that's, that's probably the key there is always be forgetting more money for the right projects for the community.
We have just a few minutes. Is there any more questions? Councilman Henderson, you still have one in your pocket?
Well, it was generally addressed by just being a living document and can be changed. Because I did note that the Greater Seaford Chamber of Commerce was named and they're no longer the Greater Seaford Chamber of Commerce. So when we.
It'll be updated, but when you Google their website, it still says Greater Chamber of Commerce. So as soon as the agency that we took it from will change it. I agree, and it'll be great because we don't have the local knowledge if something might change from the last time we wrote it. So we're going to rely on the staff and you as well to pick those up. And we are not, we don't hold any constructive criticism, it's your document, so we want to get it right. We want it to be something, you know. But I think, like you said, the living document is very important, you can change it. Who would have thought we would have been in this situation by having this limited amount of people when we talked about this project in the beginning? So you never, we actually have a section on the pandemic in the Rehoboth Plan. Very interesting about how it affects revenues, income, economic development, working from home, small businesses. So it's a lot of stuff in there to talk about things. And it's not over yet, so it's hard to quantify.
Debbie Madeline, we greatly appreciate the work you've poured into this, the events you've attended in our community, planning and zoning. We don't get the chance to thank you guys enough for all the work you do coming to these meetings, putting up with Mr. Bailey. We appreciate it so much. So with that, we'll look forward to your return. And again, if anybody has any questions that you didn't get a chance to ask, you can funnel them through the city manager or directly to Debbie. We'll get answers to those questions on the comprehensive plan.
I probably forgot to say something, I apologize. This will require an extension from state planning. And I can tell you that in talking with Director Connie Holland and working with five other municipalities right now, there's not a problem because they've, we've had to change a lot with COVID, the outreach has changed. So we're going to be working with, to be able to write an extension letter. We'd like to make sure that, that, that once we do that schedule, so probably by October, we'll know 100% and she wants it by October. And we'll stick to the schedule. So we're asking for just a minor extension from the January date to the potential worst case March.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
With that, thank you so much, appreciate it.